Good afternoon, welcome to our school board meeting today. Another sunny sunshine day that we've all looking forward to. Roll call, Ms. Regina.
Mr. Como.
I'm here.
Ms. May, here. Mr. Beatty.
Here.
Mr. Hicks.
Here.
Mr. McCoy.
Here.
Mr. Graves.
Here.
Mr. Manley.
Here.
You stand for the invocation by Ms. Rainey Bass, West Monroe High School senior, and pledged by Debo Graves.
Please bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you today and we thank you for allowing all of us to be here together. As we get ready to have this board meeting, I pray for peace, unity, wisdom, courage, strength, and guidance over every person in this room. We place every topic of discussion into your hands and ask that your will be done in and through us. Lord, give us your insight to be able to lead with integrity and make decisions that are right and good according to your plan. Lord, give us the ability to seek you in everything that we do and say. We love you and we ask all of this in your heavenly name. Amen.
Amen. Fledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board, need approval of minutes from March fourteenth. Have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Oh, I'm sorry. Any comment cards, Greg?
No comment cards for the meeting, Mr. Como.
Thank you, sir. I want to ask that again.
Good.
All in favor of approval of the minutes from the fourteenth? Say aye.
Yes.
No? Any no votes? All good. All right, approval of agenda. Need a motion?
I so move that we approve the agenda.
And a second. All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Any oppose? All right, personnel report, Dr. Coker.
Thank you, Mr. Como. We have a few appointees for this next school year, which will actually be effective July. The new folks that we have coming in, our Director of Child Welfare and Attendants, I thought he was going to be late for his show, but he made it in here, Mr. Rodney Lloyd. Congratulations, Rodney. Our new Director of High Schools, Dr. Angela Crumpton. Congratulations, Angela. Our new Director of Transportation, and I don't know what we're going to do with him with this position, to try to fill the one that he is currently in, but we certainly want to congratulate Mr. Waylon McCormick. And our new elementary school supervisor, Ms. Katie Wheeler. Congratulations, Katie. So, as we go into this next few weeks, we have several positions that will be open and advertised. Let me give you some of those positions. We're going to be opening the Personnel Supervisor Position. This is a new position, and you'll see the job description and everything that goes along with it a little bit later on in the agenda. Title One Supervisor will be open. Principal at Stirlington High School will be open. Principal at West Monroe High School. Principal at Pinecrest School. Principal at Calhoun Elementary. Principal at Riser Elementary. And Principal now at Stirlington Elementary will all be opened. And we currently have the following position open and we are advertising for is our Purchasing Agent, where Waylon was actually serving in that. So those are the positions that we will be opening as soon as this meeting is over in order to hopefully bring to you and to appoint six new principal positions. That's a lot of change in leadership there. So certainly be thinking about Mr. Thompson as he is going through... Where's Jason? There he is, back over. You didn't change sides on me, boy. As he'll be going through some of these interview processes with these openings. That's all I have, Mr. Como.
All right. Need a motion on that?
We don't.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving right on to business, all special recognition, Ms. Aline Smead.
Thank you, Mr. Como. Dr. Tucker, would you join me down on the floor? And special thanks to Ms. McCorkle, who's going to take pictures for me. All right, we have some great students here today to recognize, and I hope that you'll join me in celebrating their accomplishments. Our first group of students are regional winners for the National History Day competition. They will be advancing to the state competition in New Orleans at the end of this week, so we definitely wish them luck. The first, I'm going to call her from Washita Parish High School. For first place in group documentary, we have Gage Ellis. And I believe his partner, also first place in group documentary, is Maximilian Grubb. First place in individual exhibit, Brianna Robinson. We have second place in individual exhibit, Kamaya Harris. And this year, we actually have a middle school student recognized with this honor as well, and she is first place in individual essay, Josie Brooklyn Chamchu. And a shout out to their teacher, their sponsor teacher, who is in the audience, Ms. Erin Taylor. So this is another year she's taken a group beyond the state competition. Our next group of students to recognize, you met in December. They were our Students of the Year for the district. We're very proud to announce that our high school Student of the Year, Mr. Kareem LGR from West Monroe High School, is a High School Zone finalist. Just for explanations, Zone is a new step that the State Department put into the Student of the Year competition. So we have a school competition, then they go to district competition, then they go to Zone, and then regional, and they're named state finalists. So we do have our middle school student, Loxley Lowery, is here. Loxley, come on up. Loxley is from Good Hope Middle School, and she is the Middle School Zone and Regional finalist. So next week, she'll be competing at state, for state title. That is all the recognitions I have for you today.
Thank you, Ms. Aline, and congratulations to all the students. We're always pleased to see you going to New Orleans and Baton Rouge to represent our district. Congratulations. Now you can go back to work.
They can go back to school just to ride the bus.
To a car.
While they are transitioning, I do want to say something. They did not get to hear it, and I think parents should get to hear when their children exceed and excel. So our new Director of High School is Dr. Angela Crumpton. There's Mr. and Ms. Crumpton sitting right there on the front seat. And we still miss you, Eloyes.
All right, item number two, consider approval of the Memorandum of Understanding and Lease Agreement for Community Health School-Based Health Center at Washita Parish High School. Ms. Casey Crowell, Coordinator.
Hey, good afternoon. So I'm actually going to speak. I'm Katie Parnell, I'm the CEO for Community Health. As you probably know, we operate the school-based health centers at Riser Middle School and West Monroe High School. And so we've been working probably the last 12 months or so with the school staff, school board members, Dr. Coker, on a school-based health center, a school-based health center at Washita Parish High School. And so in your packets is the lease agreement and the Cooperative Endeavor Agreement that would outline that relationship. And so we will be paying all of the fees. We have identified a building that we would move on to the campus at Washita Parish High School, and we will be paying all of the costs associated with moving that building, setting it up. There is no expense to the school. The only thing we ask from the school, like we do at the other two school-based health centers, is simply to connect to the already established utility services that are there.
I got a question.
Okay.
On your internet and your computer, y'all pay for the cost hooked up to the school?
We do. So any, we'll pay for the cost to get anything already at the point at the school to the school-based health center.
And I think, Kay, you correct me if I'm wrong. In the, once they get the building on site, we have everything hooked up, we will actually be responsible for the energy bill for the use of it. Y'all, I can tell you, on the school health-based centers that we have so far, this is a great partnership, and they make a difference on these campuses. So we appreciate the partnership that we have established with y'all and hope for it to go many years in the future.
Well, could we have a timeline on the project, starting and finishing? Or we got that far yet? I know we're working on the endeavor today.
So we're, we are working to get that timeline finalized. I think we're going to be a little later than the last time we talked. We have a preliminary funding commitment from Living Well Foundation. And so also, our federal funding agency has just released school-based health center grants. And so we do want to go after that money. We are committed to move forward regardless, but we'd like to not miss the opportunity if we can apply for and get those funds. So my best guess is probably January 2024.
Or starting, or?
Start, yeah. No, open. Open. We would hear about the federal grant in September. And due to restrictions with that, there's a limited number of things you can do ahead of time. So we wouldn't want to preclude ourselves if we rewarded those funds with those activities, but we would anticipate being open by January 24.
Any other questions, comments? We have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it.
Item number three, discussion of architect fees. Mr. Greg Manley.
Thank you, Mr. Como. I wanted to bring before the board some discussion. I think everyone should have the architect fee schedule in front of them. And looking at the architect fee schedule, we're in the middle of a major bond proposal and building project on the east side. And I just felt like as a board, we might want to revisit our structure on that, particularly on the new construction percentage that we pay to architects. I feel like the board might want to revisit that. Because looking at our total monies and the amount that we're spending on architect fees and consultant fees, it's high. Got my attention as far as the money that we have available to use for actual construction projects. And don't get me wrong, I understand how important architects are and the consultants. We have to have them. But I do feel like from a position of a taxpayer and a board, I think it's something that we need to look seriously at and trying to be proactive and making sure all our monies are spent at the appropriate time and the amounts and so forth, you know, new construction projects. So I have my own ideas on that, but I would probably like to recommend the board possibly put this item before the Finance Committee and let the Finance Committee kind of look at this and discuss it. The last time we approved any architect fee adjustments was probably a couple of years ago. I've got a copy of that sheet here, and I think this tracks right along with what you have now. And of course, the Finance Committee at that time was the one that brought that proposal to the school board on the current fee. So I'd like to kind of track along with that, too, if it's okay with the board. So I'd make a motion that we mainly look at these architect fees and bring that before our Finance Committee to make a proposal to the board. Second.
Okay, have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Any oppose? None? It's passed. Thank you, Greg. All right, discussion and approval of cost analysis and soil compaction test for proposed buildings at West Washita Red Sim Stadium. Mike Beatty.
What I'd like to do today, guys, make a motion. We go ahead and hire TBA. They've done a cost analysis on it. And instead of having to come back and forth for things that they need to get engineers to do, we go ahead and hire them and allow them to move forward. Hopefully, we can get to a point where we send out bids maybe in August, but I'd like to make a motion, we go ahead and hire them to do the work at near, with all the work around Red Sim Stadium.
A second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Yes.
Any oppose? Motion passed. Thank you. Mike? Approval policies, Jennifer Nichols and Jennifer Willhite.
Good afternoon, Board. The Policy Revision Committee met on Tuesday, March 21st, to discuss the policies you were given for consideration for review at the last board meeting to be voted on today. The committee reviewed all of the policies and agreed to leave the policy changes the way Forthall and Mr. Miller presented. Policy JDD and JDE on suspension and expulsion, recommending revisions using the original language adopted by the board prior to 2021. And Policy GAMI, employee use of telephones and other electronic devices, recommending revisions to add cellphone use for teachers and staff to provide two-factor authentication for accounts that are provided by or authorized by the Washita Parish School Board.
Any discussion? Have a motion?
I so move that we approve these policies.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor, yes?
Yes.
Any oppose? There's none. Thank you. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Board. That was their approval of our, you know, of our minutes from our meeting. I'm now asking for approval for the policies that you were given at the last meeting that Ms. Nichols just spoke about. Today, I'm asking approval of those three policies.
Okay, so I so move that we approve these policies. I think I've just said that.
And a second. All in favor, yes?
Yes.
None oppose? Thank you.
Okay, and you'll get a copy of the final approved policy when I get those back from Forthall.
All right. Item number five, approval, or number six, approval of positions and job descriptions. Hey, Todd.
Mr. Como, Board, thank you. Board, these are the policies that you and I talked about in our individual meetings and some changes, slight changes. The first being, Mr. Killian has requested to change one of his job descriptions for a reading math coordinator, to retitle that Title One Coordinator. They are doing much more than reading and math, and that's been the traditional title for a long time. So we just want to update that job description, just a title change only, to Title One Coordinator. Also, I'm asking you today to approve the position and job descriptions for the Personnel Supervisor that I talked about. This is just a reassignment within the central office. Also, Coordinator of Public Information that will team with Aline and really enhance what we're doing there as far as getting information out to the public and what we're doing in the district. And then a job description for two safety monitors that will work along with Mr. Fremont to enhance the security on our campuses, all what we mentioned. So I'm asking you to approve those positions and these job descriptions for those with a one title change, to reading math coordinator to Title One Coordinator.
I so move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Todd, how many positions are we looking at on that Director of Safety, Security, and Risk Management monitor?
I'm thinking about two right now, Mr. Manley.
Is that Supervisor Personnel, is that going to be a new addition?
No, that's just a reassignment within the office. Right.
That's all I got.
On the Coordinator for the Information, I know that that's, we're going to advertise for that as well as those who will be working with safety and security. I know we don't have those people in position yet, but it would be great if the general public knew that we're moving forward to do some additional thing that's going to help ensure safety and security for their children. I think a lot of times, we don't really get the news out about the things that we are doing. I think we discussed that, you discussed that with us. So I think it would be an awesome thing for us to try to make sure we get that out.
We will do that.
Once we approve the position and description today, how long will it take to actually interview and get the people in line?
We will post them, and it'll just depend that the, the monitors will probably come on. They will be nine-month positions. They'll come on the beginning of the next school year. The Public Information Person will come on July 1st, is the plan, or maybe even before. We'll work that out.
So the others will come on in August? The safety and security?
Yes. Yes.
Any other discussion? Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the policies, the positions and job descriptions offered by Mr. Geis?
I so move.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor, yes?
Yes.
Any oppose? Motion passed. Thank you.
Thank you. I have one other question.
Right here.
If they're going to be nine months and they're going to come on in August, when would they, the term of their employment for the year end?
They'd be nine months. So they would end with teachers. It'd be a teacher.
It's September or May.
Yeah. Yeah.
Financial report, Ms. Micas. For February 28th, 2023.
Good afternoon, Board. You have in front of you the financial report for the period ending February 28th, 2023. Apparently, I got ahead of myself because it's only February 2023 on the top of the schedule. This is the eighth period of the year. We are currently in the process, my staff has started working on budget revisions already. So very soon, we will have budget revisions for the current year that we're in, and then the summer will roll right on into the budget for next year. It's coming fast. I do not anticipate many budget revisions as we are on target with our original adopted budget for the year. You can see at the bottom of the first column, we're ending the period with 40.7 million in fund balance for the general fund. That's 89% of where we were this time last year. For District One, M and O, it's 28.6 million, and that's a little over 100%. It's 115% of where we were last year at this time. And that does just a timing difference in when revenues come in and expenses go out. That is so close to where we were. I would not consider that a material difference at this point in the year. You have also on the first page our sales taxes for the year 1968-95, West Washita sales taxes, and you can see they're all at 100% or above where we were this time last year. If you look to the last two pages, just a reminder, you have the general fund and the M and O. This gives a comparison of revenues and expenditures for the last three years, just to give you a little more data to compare those funds to. And this percentage is based on where we are in the current budget. So the first, the first schedules compare where we were, where we are to this point last year, and the last pages compare where we are to this point in the current budget for the year. So you'll see the general fund revenues on the next to the last page. We're at 71% of our current budget at this point in the year, which is right where we need to be in the eighth period. And then the very last page compares the fund balances and the annual excess as we are currently.
So the figure on the last page for general budget, for instance, is, no, it's M and O I'm looking at, but general budget is, that is what we were at this time last year?
No, that is compared to where we are in our current year's budget on the very last page. So our estimated budget for the year is, we're estimated to end the year with 23.3 million in fund balance, and currently, we're sitting at 40.7. The main difference in that is 90% of our budget being in salaries and benefits, and our salaries are prorated throughout a 12-month period. So there's a little bit of a timing difference there. We'll continue to pay salaries past the end of the year because our prorated salaries go all the way through August. So timing-wise, as the year goes on, it makes our fund balance look higher than it actually is once we post all of those tables out.
The estimated fund balance on both the general fund and the M and O, that is what we anticipate having at the end of the fiscal period. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, that is the adopted budget.
Okay. And that is an increase of what we've had last year, right?
Yes. Yes. But when we do the revised budget between now and the end of the year, we will look at those very closely and make sure that they're still in line, and I'll bring to you any changes. But as of now, we do anticipate that's what our ending fund balance will be.
We should have a surplus of 23, 23 or 4 million, one in 27.
Yes, sir. And that falls, that falls within the board policy of the 10 to 15% of fund balance that allows us to have that cash flow to operate and to be, to have a stable budget, basically.
You're doing a great job, Regina, managing our motion.
Thank you, Mr. Manley.
Giving Mr. Geis plenty of room to operate.
I can't complain too much about Mr. Geis.
I see that smile on his face over there.
Any other questions or comments?
One thing I know is with him coming to Personnel, and he has been in charge of 90% of the budget, and we have operated well, so...
So you're saying he's real frugal?
Personnel directors tend to be frugal, so, you know, the previous one before.
He kind of turned it red over a little bit.
Is he more frugal than the current superintendent?
I would say it's a tight race.
Jason, are you hearing all of this?
I wish we'd have known that before we voted. Just kidding, just kidding.
I have tried to follow up to make sure Jason's absorbing all of this when he's...
He got a big notepad, I know.
He does.
Small office. Sorry about that, Jason.
Thank you, Regina.
Any other questions or comment? Motion to approve?
I so move.
And a second. All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Micas. Let's see. Construction renovation project reports, Mr. Hipo.
Good afternoon, Board.
Good afternoon.
You should have a list of staff reports in front of you. I'll just briefly go through some of them. West Washita, we will be having a ribbon cutting this Friday at West Washita. Highland Roof, the weather permitted them to not do that roof yet at Highland Elementary. Soon as, um, we get good weather. They've been working on some other roofs that they have completed, so that's the reason they have to finish that. Um, we're just moving forward with the canopy, pouring footings, uh, we've got some sewer lines to relocate at Robinson, so we got some things that we, uh, were faced with today, uh, that we got to make a decision on, so. And then, uh, Architect Alliance, uh, Washington High School, they're starting the, uh, baseball, football, uh, renovations, uh, after baseball, it should be coming to an end pretty soon, so.
It's coming Friday.
We, we completed the Crosley Roof and Schwartz Lower. Both of those projects are completed. Uh, then we got some bid items to, to vote on. Uh, Mr. McCormick will take care of that, and you have some pictures there that are in black and white. They don't show up too well. But that's just, uh, roofing projects that were completed. And then as you move on over to, uh, Lazby Associates, uh, we got a bid opening on the treatment plants, uh, April the twenty-sixth for Central Elementary, and then May the second for Calhoun Elementary. Bid opens for those two schools for the new treatment plant to be put in this summer. And then start at the middle, not a whole lot of changes. Uh, we just continue to move in forward, hoping to get some good dry. A lot, well, we don't want a lot of wind because we can't put roofing panels up just to manage with a lot of wind, but, uh, we just need some good weather.
We're still looking at December of this year as tentative completion date.
Still what they shooting for. I'm, I'm hoping that we, uh, meet that goal.
January tenth, twenty twenty-four is what they had on their last.
Yeah.
Um, that's punch list completion though, right?
That is.
That was complete punch list.
Dr. Coker and I are at different points of view on the completion dates. I'm using completion date, he's using punch list completion.
You can, you can get realistic.
I think we can move in though on completion date and work on punch list.
I certainly hope so.
I'm just being optimistic.
You can't get it now.
With Fire Marshal approval.
A Fire Marshal, goddamn.
Yeah, I'm fully aware of the Fire Marshal.
Last was, uh, Land Three Architect, uh, electrical line at Richwood High School was repaired during the spring break. Got all that taken care of. Still bad, you know, where we have is still slow moving on that project. And then Robinson Elementary Cafeteria, that, that roof has been completed, so. That's all I have. If y'all have any questions.
Mr. Appio, one clarification. Uh, we talked about architect fees a while ago, and of course, we made some, had some discussion in the past on architect regarding roof replacements and roof repairs. And I want to make sure from my perspective, before we go to the finance committee, that any roof repair or replacement that we're doing, before we sign an architect, you are, you are, or the maintenance supervisor is looking at and verifying that we do need an architect for the job. Is that, is that still our policy and procedure?
That's still our policy.
Okay.
You might want to invite the arc, uh, Fire Marshal out for coffee about a month before that date. To let him walk through and see any obvious things that are wrong. Don't want surprises.
Good point, Tommy. Good point.
We do get yearly schedule, uh, from the Fire Marshal. They go to every school every year if you don't realize that. They.
Oh, I realize.
They inspect every school every year, so we get, Mr. Leonard, he gets a email from me that I get of things that they have rolled up, and that, you know, it'd be exit signs or just, you know, small things, but just go take care of it and don't get in violations anything.
Does the Fire Marshal go out periodically during the construction phase, or he wastes everything, it's completed, and goes out for one final inspection? How's that work?
I slept up to the contract of what they wanted.
What, they usually, is there three times?
They, they come in and ask for advice on, hey, what do we need to do here? Fire Marshal can give them advice on what they need to do, but the plans have already been submitted to the State Fire Marshal. They put their stamp on it.
Okay.
And as long as, when they come and it's built the way they want it.
It shouldn't be any problems or issues. Okay.
Ninety percent of the time, they do find some small stuff.
It will.
And it's, it's nothing major, but.
Did you or Waylon talk to anyone about the handicap lift for the stadium at West Monroe?
Uh, we haven't, uh, talked about it. I mean, we have talked about it, but I think we need to get, uh, engineer or architect to kind of look at, you know, what we need to do over there for putting in a, a lift and what we're going. I mean, it's my opinion, what we're going to put in is really not going to help what they want to do. I mean, you got a, a lift that we put in at West Washington for our handicap kids, and they, they going to use that. They, they need to leave ten minutes before class is over, because that thing is just.
It's slow.
It's slow. I don't, I mean, uh, we can.
They just had to get there early, is all I'd say.
Yeah.
I think Tim Brandon was the architect for the stadium. They ought to know where the wiring and everything is there, right?
Before, so.
Okay.
Well, a couple of years ago, we, we visited this, and it's never come of it, but it's a lot of people that can't get up them ramps. And if they get loose coming up them ramps or coming down, I mean, it's going to be really ugly. Because it's, uh, it's elderly people and trying to push them up them ramps, and it's elderly people in.
I agree. Everything's going to be done. We just need to make sure.
But this is the third year that we've kind of discussed this, and we haven't got any pricing that I know of. I haven't seen any kind of across the board.
It's actually been longer than that, Mr. Hicks, because it was before COVID when Bobby was here, and we talked about it, and it kind of fell through the cracks. But this is for a lift, not an escalator.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But if we could get some kind of design of it and, and some kind of revenue of what it would cost, you know, it would help.
You can go to West Washington Friday, and it's not raining. You walk out and look at the one they have. Okay. All right, thank you, Stephen. Evaluation of bids? Nine to be evaluated. That's great. Permission to bid?
Mr. Como, we can take these collectively if y'all will give us permission to put these out for bid?
Mr. McCormick, uh, I'd like to pull what says the Drew Parking Lot.
Yes.
I'd like to remove that and not vote on that today.
Okay.
And, uh, the construction department or construction committee will be meeting next week, and I, and I have some further questions on that.
Okay.
Why don't we take them individually, that way we can.
There you go.
All right.
Item one, Parking Lot, Washington Parish High School, East Side Funds, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars bond. Are you going to read that or you want me to?
I can. Three hundred and fifty thousand dollars is the budget for that, and that has been assigned to Architect Alliance.
I make a motion, we'll put that out to bid.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Question. Question. On, on that parking lot, what, what does that include at Washington High School?
The front parking lot where the teachers park.
The front?
It's got a hole there right now.
Yeah, they do. They do.
But it's some digging out and some overlaying of existing, uh, parking areas, what it is. We're not pulling the whole, tearing the whole thing out or.
Yes, in bad shape.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
None opposed?
Thirty-seven twenty-three is Washington Parish High School Office remodel. The budget for it is five hundred thousand with East Side Bond as well, and Architect Alliance.
I make a motion, we'll, uh, put that out to bid.
Second.
All in favor? Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Or is there any discussion? I'm sorry. Y'all got any questions? All in favor? Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
None opposed? Thank you.
Thirty-eight twenty-three, Jack Hayes Parking Lot. East Side Bond, four hundred and nineteen thousand is the budget. Lazby and Associates.
On that one, it's the front where the teachers park and where the bus drivers, buses come through. We want to take the asphalt up, put saw cement down, redo the base because there's no base there to hold it. So, uh, I'd like to go ahead and put that out to bid too.
Make a motion.
That's a motion, yeah.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor? Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
None opposed?
Basically, they go.
Did you have a question?
Parking lot.
Yeah. We have some discussion.
Just a question.
Okay, go ahead.
On that, I know I was involved on this originally whenever we first started talking about the bond proposal. Uh, what all was that entail? They go out there?
Uh, we pull up, it's everything from the left-hand side all the way to the tennis court over.
Okay, so the whole parking lot will be redone?
Yeah, all except that little bit on right-hand side. It's a small part over there.
Over by cafeteria?
Yeah, it's in good shape. But, uh, it's where the buses come through and the teachers park.
Okay.
And it's in pretty bad shape.
Was there a plan to try to get that done this summer?
Yes, so that's what we've got bid now.
For thirty-nine twenty-three, I believe y'all would need to reject that one since it's on the agenda. Drew Parking Lot.
McCormick, I think they can table.
Just taking no action?
You're going to table?
Yeah.
Okay. Last one is forty twenty-three, Bathroom Remodels for Coroly, Drew.
Excuse me, Waylon, do we, do we need a motion to table?
Did, okay. Okay, I so move that we table.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
None opposed? Thank you, Waylon.
Okay. Forty twenty-three, Bathroom Remodels for three schools. Tim Brandon is the architect. West Side Sales Tax at one point two million.
Oh.
I so move.
I, second.
I was waiting for any comments she was going to make.
I was ready to say, I didn't know if you were going to say or ask for.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. None opposed? All right.
That's all I have, boy.
Thanks, sir. Yes, President Reports, that's me. Graduation Dates, guys, next month is May. You should have something that looks like this from a while back. Eileen sent you. If you don't have one, she can email you one.
I have no idea.
Annual Financial Reports, some of you have already done it. Me and the rest of you haven't. We need to get those done by May fifteenth. Oh, had a few calls, I'm sure y'all have too, since the Nashville and the bank incident yesterday. People are concerned about safety. If anybody watched the video, you could see why they are concerned. We are all concerned. And we're going to do, have discussions, hopefully at some point, to see what we can do to help make our kids safer. And that's all I say on that. Our next board meeting is May ninth.
Uh, excuse me, just a reminder too, we have the Scholars Banquet.
I don't have that on my list.
Monday.
I do.
Monday evening.
I'm gonna.
And, uh, our own Dr. Coker, I think is going to be the, the guest speaker, and so I think we need to be in attendance.
I think tomorrow is the State of the Union or State of the Education tomorrow.
Monday night.
All righty. Moving on to the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Como. Uh, first of all, before we get to next Monday, we actually have our Focus on Education presentation tomorrow with the West Monroe, West Washington Chamber. That will begin at eleven-thirty. Um, got some great directors that will be assisting me in the, in the presentation of that. And so we're excited about being able to tell all the good things that are going on in the Washington Parish school system. Also, on Friday, I think it's been mentioned already, but we will be having the ribbon cutting for the new entry area. The extension on to the Ag Science, uh, some dressing facilities for the tennis team. And also new counseling offices at West Washington High School begins at ten o'clock. The ribbon cutting will be at ten o'clock. And that is on Friday of this week. And then when we honor our, uh, graduating seniors who have scored, scored a certain, uh, score on the ACT and had all the honors and accolades, and these are not only Washington Parish students, but they're from all over Washington Parish. So that would be Monroe City, Private Parochial, all of them are invited, and that's a, that's always a really, uh, exciting night. If you want ten minutes of sleep, come out and I can let you sleep for ten minutes while I'm speaking. Okay? So, uh, that will be on the seventeenth at six-thirty. Seventeenth at six-thirty. And.
Monroe Civic Center, right?
Monroe Civic Center, yes. And that's all I have, Mr. Como.
Thank you, sir. I'll have a motion to adjourn.